I have a short inspirational quote I would like to read. We often fear what we do not understand. Our best defense is knowledge.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snae.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes. Councilmember Herniman.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show that six members of council are present. This is a public hearing notice. A public hearing with Tiffin City Council will be held in council chambers, 51 East Market Street on Monday, May 20, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the consideration of ordinance 2024-38. Student ordinance responding to petition number 2024-01, vacating the alley of Frost Parkway, running east and west between lots numbers 517, 518, and 519 of Heming Reservoir and lots numbers 33 and 534 of New Fort Ball addition in the third ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio. At this time, anyone wishing to address council may direct their questions to myself regarding this. Yes.
Where specifically is that alley? I know you gave a.
Sure.
But where exactly does that alley going to be shut off?
Sure. I don't know.
Okay. It's on Frost Parkway. I think the number is 73. Is that correct? It's right next to 73 Frost Parkway.
Is that the restaurant that's there? Is it that brick house? Which one is it?
Sorry. It's the house that's there. That's where. So it's right next to a house. And then on the other side of the house is actually just a vacant, just vacant land, which is also owned by the same property owner. It would now dead end into the alley that's behind it. So there shouldn't be any changes in access. Most of folks using that back alley are most likely already using it from the other, the other end.
I'm still not clear on where it's at.
It's next, it's kind of near. If you know where Clay Street is, there's a big.
I don't, I don't properly. You know, one alley got closed off on Adams Street. Just because you come on down. Partnership that owns 41 Adams. And ever since that party, that alleyway on Adams Street got closed off, I got trash trucks coming down my alleyway that are just tearing up the paved driveway. The city doesn't, even though they got to raise, you know, even though they raised the taxes, they don't come in there and maintain that property. When I bought that in 1996, that was freshly paved. And it's, and they've done nothing.
Okay, he's got it.
To maintain that, other than throw some stones on there. And then when the trash truck comes by, the stones end up in my property for my tenants. And then my tenants have to go through that. And what I'm saying is, if you cut off access one place, it means that the access at another alleyway jumps the, you know, because like you have a trash truck that can only come down that one to get to the trash can at the property that's on Miami. Miami, there's a, that has a big coat back there. And so he goes back there in this one trash thing and, you know, goes back in there and comes back down my property, you know, down that alley in my property. Where before he could go in at the other alleyway or go out the other alleyway. But now that's closed off. And so I'm, I'm concerned that where exactly are we wanting to close off the other?
So he's going to show you.
I think Vic's going to show you.
So to orient yourself, this is, this is, this is Frost Parkway right here. Here's the river. Property right here, this brick home. He actually owns this vacant lot right here as well. He's looking to close this alley right here. Yeah. And it goes, and it will, it will stop where the stop sign is. That'll be. That's where it would go to.
Yes.
He would still, he would still have access to the property. But he would.
Tell him I'll come.
Well, he would, it would, it would most likely be gates or there will be gates at some point. So if we need access, we can get back there. But no, it may not be for public.
My concern is, is what does the city get out of it? You know, what, what is the benefit to the city to close up that alley? I mean, how long has it been open?
So I can't necessarily answer how long it's been open. It's, it's been a public right of way for many, many years. To be frank, the, the city loses property with this. We, we give this property to the, to the landlord. But it allows them for development later.
Does his taxes go off for that land that he's, he's?
That would get added to his property, correct?
It just seems to me that, you know, to. If, if the alleyway was in disrepair, something like that, and nobody was using it anymore, I could understand giving, you know, giving alley away.
The landlord wants the property.
That's, that's specifically what you're, tell me you're saying. Whoever owns that, I don't know him and I, you know, it doesn't matter if I did or not.
Sir, can I have your name and address? So that way we can address your concerns.
My name is Mark Morgan. I live at 165 Lincoln Road here in Tiffin.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, I also own property in that area. I'm concerned if we're giving, if we're giving property away, this is benefiting anybody but the people that get it. Is it making the neighborhood better?
Yeah. I don't think that I would say that, but yes. Please, Mayor.
So in this case, I believe as Mr. Dutrow explained, the property owner owns the house and then the property on the other side. And he already maintains that alley. So by us vacating that alley, then that takes the responsibility of maintaining that alley off of the city. So he will continue to maintain that alley.
But you guys don't vacate alleys anyways. Because like I just said, I said earlier, I've, I've owned 41 Adams Street that had paved alley since 1996. And nobody from the city, even though they raised the city income tax to 2% to increase the ability to maintain roadway here in town, no one maintains those type of things. They, they've come in a couple of times since that tax went up and threw some stone in there. But as soon as the trash truck goes through with that big load, that, those, those stone goes flying. They need to clean it and pave it or at least patch it with something that's going to stay there. If you're going to maintain something, you need to maintain it properly. Not just throw some stone and say, well, we're done here. But.
When you leave the meeting tonight, I challenge all of you to go down around that area on Adams Street and try to drive through the alleyways. The alleyway next to the property goes from Adams to Miami Street. It's got potholes everywhere. And we have called the city and asked the city to repair it five, six years ago. And we were told because of the cost, the city doesn't maintain alleys anymore.
Well, I'd be happy to come down there and take a look at it with you.
That'd be great.
So you give me some contact information or your phone number? I can give you a call when I have. Okay. I will get ahold of you and we'll make an appointment and we'll go down there and take a look at the alley ourselves.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to address council this evening regarding this alley request? Okay, thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing for that petition. Minutes for May 6, 2024, regular and committee of the whole meetings will be presented at the next meeting. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Law Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
Thank you, Madam President. The Law and Community Planning Committee met in city chambers on May 13, 2024, starting at 5:15 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 24-19 regarding the CIDEC contract renewal as well as any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Kayler, John Hayes, and Dennis Snae. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Councilmember Scott Herniman, and Councilmember Aaron Jones. Attending from the public were Aaron Montz, Adam Gilmore, and Donna Gross representing TSAP. Councilmember Kayler started the meeting by opening discussions regarding mayor's request for legislation number 24-19. In the past, the city of Tiffin has contracted with the Seneca Industrial and Economic Development Corporation, DBA TSAP, to handle certain aspects of commercial and industrial development for the city of Tiffin. That contract is coming up for renewal, and the committee was tasked with whether or not to recommend that the city renew the contract. The fees and payments from the city to CIDEC/TSEP would remain the same as in the past, $130,000 annually. CIDEC/TSEP is a private 501(c)(3) and as such possesses advantages when it comes to handling commercial and industrial development. For example, CIDEC/TSEP would not be subject to the same open records laws as staff performing the same duties for the city of Tiffin would be. Therefore, CIDEC/TSEP is able to better hold private business information in confidence. Also, the cost to the city to handle the tasks that CIDEC/TSEP currently handles would most likely equal the fees the city pays to CIDEC/TSEP and could even exceed those fees. Councilmember John Hayes moved to recommend that the law director draft legislation approving the mayor to renew the city's contract with CIDEC/TSEP. Councilmember Dennis Snae seconded the motion. The motion carried with a vote of three to zero. With no other business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Kayler. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No reports, Madam President.
Anyone from the Personnel or Labor Relations Committee have a report? Sure.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Snae.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. A street sidewalk sewers committee meeting was held on May 9, 2024, at 5:30 PM onsite at the parking lot on the corner of West Market and St. Clair Streets. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Aaron Jones, Scott Herniman, and Dennis Snae, along with Law Director Zach Fowler, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutro, City Engineer Matt Watson, Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner, John Hill, Brian Marker, and Dan Pritt. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss alley vacation petition number 2024-02 by Dan Pritt and John Hill in the first ward between West Market and St. Clair Streets. Mayor request for legislation 2024-20 for removal of stoplight at Hall and Sandusky Streets and any other business that may come before them. Thacker asked the petitioners to inform the committee why they wanted the alley vacated. Mr. Hill is the owner of Heavenly Pizza and is building the new headquarters for Heavenly Pizza at the lot of the old West Junior High. He would like to include an outdoor space to provide entertainment for customers and the public. Thacker read the responses of department heads regarding the potential alley vacation. Watson had no issues with the proposed alley vacation so long as the city maintains an easement to maintain a sewer line located within the east-west portion of said alley. Snae motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to vacate the alley. Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed four to zero. The committee decided to hold the discussion on mayor's request for legislation 24-20 to be scheduled at the next regular council meeting. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 5:44 PM.
Thank you. Any questions? Report. Thank you. And economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Herniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Thank you. We are now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start off tonight with a proclamation for the Tiffin Fire and Rescue. May 19 to 25 is EMS Week. It's the 50th anniversary of EMS Week. And just want to mention before I start that there will be an open house this Saturday at Fire Station Number One from 1 to 3 PM. So I hope everybody out there is able to attend. So for the proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Lee Wilkinson, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 to the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 50th anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week: Honoring our Past and Forging Our Future. So someone here from Tiffin Fire and Rescue to accept the proclamation?
Yes. Excellent.
Oh, did I get our. It was right, right spot. It was for you, just not for me. One, two, three. Last one, last one. Perfect.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. Very good. Okay. Also, last week, May 12 to the 18th, was National Police Week with May 15 being Peace Officer Memorial Day. And I have a proclamation for the Tiffin Police Department and Chief Polly. Whereas the week of May 12 to 18, 2024, is recognized as National Police Week, a time to reflect upon and honor the incredible sacrifices and service of our nation's law enforcement officers. And whereas May 15 marks a solemn occasion to honor and remember the men and women of local, state, and federal law enforcement who have sacrificed their lives or endured injuries in the line of duty, whereas over 800,000 law enforcement officers serve across the United States, committing themselves to the protection and safety of our communities with unwavering dedication and bravery. And whereas these officers are not only public servants, but cherish family members, spouses, parents, sons, and daughters whose lives and contributions extend far beyond their professional duties. And whereas the legacy of these brave individuals is one of profound commitment, selflessness, and heroism that will forever be etched in the hearts of their loved ones in the communities they serve. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and pay tribute to these courageous men and women acknowledging their service and the profound loss felt by their families and colleagues. Now, therefore, I, Lee Wilkinson, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2024, as Peace Officer Memorial Day.
Oh, you think I'd learn?
That's okay.
That's better. One, two, three. Last one. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got them shiny shoes on.
And at this time, I believe Chief Polly has some awards to present. So I will let him do that.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, Madam President, members of council, for this opportunity to recognize some officers for their innovative thinking, creative thinking, swift action that ended up saving some lives. And so I'd like to recognize Officer Becca Tim and Sergeant Aller and Officer Stephen Boytler. Sergeant Aller was unable to be here today. So I will call up Officer Becca Tim, please. On February 22, 2024, Officers Becca Tim and Sergeant Eric Aller showed remarkable composure and decisive action in a critical incident on West Perry Street Bridge. Responding to a distress call regarding a suicidal female who had reportedly consumed pills, Tiffin officers approached the situation with calm resolve. Utilizing her training in crisis intervention, Officer Tim engaged the troubled individual in conversation, offering reassurance and support. Amidst the unfolding events, she noticed a paper bag suspected to contain more pills. Using this as a focal point, Officer Tim tactfully questioned the female about its contents while subtly ensuring the woman's safety by reaching closer and closer towards the bag. In a synchronized display of teamwork, Officer Tim and Sergeant Aller communicating through nonverbal cues coordinated their actions with precision. With a swift and calculated movement, they secured their grips on the woman, together pulling her away from the edge of the railing. Their seamless collaboration averted a potential tragedy underscoring their professionalism and dedication to their duty. Even after the immediate danger had passed, Officer Tim remained steadfast in her commitment to the woman's well-being, offering ongoing support and assistance. The quick thinking and strategic approach in a high-pressure situation exemplify these two public servants' unwavering dedication to serving and protecting our community. In recognition of their lifesaving efforts, Officer Tim and Sergeant Aller are hereby awarded the Departmental Lifesaving Award. This acolyte is bestowed upon officers whose actions in direct involvement have saved the life of another person underscoring their exceptional courage and commitment to duty. Tiffin Police Department takes pride in officers of their caliber whose exemplary action uphold the highest standards of law enforcement and serve as a testament to their selfless dedication to the residents of the city of Tiffin. This is Officer Tim's first lifesaving award and Sergeant Aller's fourth lifesaving award. And I went back into the personnel files to see if I could find anybody that had ever received four lifesaving awards in their career. Cannot find any one to do that. He doesn't get a medal to go on his, his uniform yet because we have to have one specially made for, for Sergeant Aller because he has four. So with that said, congratulations to Sergeant Aller and congratulations to Officer Becca Tim. If I could call up Officer Stephen Boytler, please? On March 24, 2024, Tiffin PD officers responded urgently to a distress call regarding a man contemplating suicide on the East Perry Street Bridge. Officer Caden M. Schoff engaged the troubled individual while Officer Caden Wusher managed traffic to ensure safety. Meanwhile, Officer Stephen Boytler executed a daring intervention. Sneaking up behind the man, Officer Boytler acted swiftly, preventing him from plunging into the river below. The man's anguish stemmed from a recent breakup, driving him to the brink. Officer Boytler's timely intervention averted potential tragedy, sparing the man from severe harm or worse and eliminating the need for a risky cold water rescue operation that could have endangered more lives. About a week later, the man personally thanked Officer Boytler for his lifesaving act, underscoring the profound impact of his bravery. In record, in recognition of Officer Boytler's heroic action, he is awarded the Departmental's Lifesaving Award. This accolade celebrates officers whose courage and quick thinking directly save lives, showcasing Officer Boytler's exceptional dedication to his duty. Tiffin Police Department commends officers like Officer Boytler whose exemplary conduct upholds the highest standard of law enforcement and demonstrates unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of the community. This is Officer Boytler's first lifesaving award. Congratulations. And that concludes the awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Makes me very proud of our police department. Okay, I have a couple reminders before we go on to the next item. Tiffin Seneca Farmer's Market had their first farmer's market on May 18. Looked like it was well-attended. It was down on the far block of Madison Street. So don't forget that for next weekend. Operation Hallmark has a Nutcracker Events sale going on. So if you haven't heard of that, be sure to see Christie Wiser and order your Nutcracker to be ready for the Christmas in July event. Also, the flowers for the planters are available for pickup. If you haven't picked your flowers up for your planter in downtown, call Christie Wiser to get your flowers picked up and planted. Lots of, lots of things going on for Tiffin Parks and Rec. Got the pool opening for this Monday, the Memorial Day. That's a week from today. And June 1 is the Fishing Derby at the Isaac Walton. And the youth camps are beginning. And the East Green Concert Series is starting up. So next, I would like to get an update from our Water Treatment Plant Superintendent, Kevin Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me here tonight to give my 23 presentation. This one will be, it won't be as long as most of the others, so. Just to start out, like, our staff is made up of seven people, including myself. We had a guy retire last year, Gary Gaedo. He was our plant mechanic. He had 26 years in with the city. So when he retired, one of our operators, Kerry Correll, took his job. So that opened up an operator job where we hired Isaiah Shide. He had been with Monroeville's Water and Wastewater Facility for about a year. So far, he's working out well. He's just started his CDL class. It's a three-week course to hopefully obtain a CDL. Also, last year, Kerry Correll and. Also, last year, Kerry Correll and Nick Boar both obtained their Class III Operator Licenses. So we're, I think, if you look around at other plants and other cities, to have as many Class III operators as we do is pretty rare. We're up to three of them. And then we got a couple other guys that are on their way to getting those as well. So because a lot of people are new, as far as council and even the mayor, I was gonna go back through the history of the wastewater plant, just how it started and how it got to where it was and what, what is gonna be happening in the near future. So back in, before there was a wastewater plant, they started talking about the design for one in '36 when wastewater was just discharged directly into the river at that time. Construction started in '55 and the plant opened up in December of '56, where there was only primary treatment. So it just had screening, two primary clarifiers, and then disinfection, and then out to the river. The first upgrade they had, it was in 1968. They added secondary treatment to the plant and aeration. And then an additional chlorine tank. So you had further disinfection and then everything discharged to the river. They also added two digesters, which is where the solids go from the second, or the primary clarifiers, and then to the lagoons, and then out to farm fields. 1988 was the next smaller, it was a small upgrade in comparison. They added a third digester and a storm tank, which the plant was designed for 4 million gallons to be treated completely. The storm tank allowed primary treatment of up to 15 million gallons. And then the four would go through the whole plant. And the additional flow that came in from rain events would go through primary treatment, disinfection, and the discharge to the river. They also added a third digester at that time. In 2015, the city decided to look, take another look at their long-term control plan, which initially it was, that's the agreement with the EPA. They, they were doing total separation on the first one. They looked at partial separation because of the downtown area. So the second long-term, the new long-term control plan that started in 2015, the three phases as far as the plant goes and inside of that long-term control plan were to update the screening and aeration, go from 4 million gallons to 13 million gallons a day. And then the third part, which hasn't happened yet, was originally agreed upon as an EQ basin, but the city's now looking at a high-rate treatment plant as opposed to the EQ basin, which would save quite a bit of money as far as the city goes. So the, the first upgrade in '16 of that three-part plan was to upgrade the bar screens. The ones on the left, you can see the, the bars are about 3/4-inch gap. So it allowed quite a bit of larger solids to go through those. And it affected the downstream equipment quite a bit. And the ones on the right are the ones that were put in. They're quarter-inch stainless steel bar screens. And they've really done a great job as far as protecting the equipment. And we really haven't had to do anything to them since they've been in, other than routine maintenance. The second part of that 2016 project was to upgrade the aeration system. You can see the bottom-left picture is the aeration tank. Before the upgrade, you could see the, it was, they were coarse bubble diffusers. And you can see how turbulent the water is. And then on the bottom-right is after those new tube diffusers were put in, which allows the finer bubbles, gives you a better oxygen transfer into the water. So you don't need to use as much air or energy to get the same dissolved oxygen content in the water. And this is an overview of the 21 project. Everything highlighted in green are the buildings that were put in for that project. Some of the smaller ones were just electrical rooms. And then I'll kind of touch on what the rest of them were. Part of the 21 project, we also updated our SCADA system. This is just a screenshot of what it looks like if you were to log on to the SCADA system, which I can do from my phone or a computer. And that allows us to respond to any alarm calls after hours. And it's really cut down on the times that we've had to go into the plant because we can reset pumps, turn things on and off from the SCADA system from home. So part of the, part of the 21 project, we replaced all four of our raw pumps. They're all four Gorman Rupp pumps, which Gorman Rupp is a company out of Mansfield that they make and manufacture everything right there. And they're some of the best pumps really in the world as far as wastewater goes. And we're pretty fortunate to have them so close to home because it's, makes it easy for service and maintenance if we need parts or anything. Another part of the 21 upgrade was a new primary splitter box and a primary tank. If you look at the primary tank on the right, you can see the previous height of the tank. And the splitter box was the same height as that. And all the splitter box does is the raw pumps pump to that and it splits the water between the two primary tanks. But by raising the heights of the splitter box and the primary tanks, we were able to eliminate the secondary lift pumps that were in the aeration tank. So that's, that's been a nice, a really nice part of that, that upgrade, to eliminate four pumps, the cost and the maintenance of them. An aerobic tank, that's the next part of the process after their primary clarifiers. And this just allows us to, like, the second half of the plan is a lot of, a lot of it's done by, like, biological activity with bugs and bacteria and stuff. And we recycle that in this anaerobic tank. So from our aeration tank, the solids go back into the anaerobic tank where they're starved of oxygen. And then they get back into the aeration tank and you give them oxygen again, and that makes them a lot more active. And that's allowed us to get rid of phosphorus and ammonia without chemical usage. So we normally have to use a decent amount of ferris chloride to eliminate the phosphorus in the wastewater. But by this anaerobic process, we achieve biological nutrient removal, is what it's called. So that allows us to use about 30% less ferris each year since, since this upgrade. So in '16, we also, when we did the screens and aeration tanks, we also added a new blower. We had 350-horse blowers before that were from the '68 upgrade. And they were big energy users. The '16, or the blower from '16 was a little oversized. So in '21, we added a second type of blower. Same design, but it's a little bit smaller. So that's the one we run about 90% of the time unless we get a big push. But I'll kind of touch on some of the energy savings in a minute. Secondary splitter boxes is just same as the primary, but it, it just splits the flow from the aeration tank into the four secondary tanks. And this new 80-foot diameter secondary tank, it has the same capacity as our three previous secondary settling tanks. So that's, this is what really allowed us to go from the 4 million gallons a day to 13 million gallons a day. And one of our other new buildings has our raw, or our RAS pumps, which is Return Activated Sledge, which is the pumps that pump off of the bottom of the primaries and they pump back into the aeration tank or the anaerobic tank, depending on how we have them set. And the tanks on the right are ferris storage. We're able to hold about 12,000 gallons of ferris chloride now. So we're able to take a full truckload into each one of those tanks so we don't have to order as much. Or really, we're ordering like four times a year now, since we're using a lot less of it. Part of the 21 upgrade, we also went from chlorine disinfection to UV. This is just a couple pictures of the, the banks in there. After UV goes to post-air tank, which is just where we, if we need to add more dissolved oxygen to the water before it discharges out into the river, we can. We have a, our MPDS permit that requires our plant effluent to have at least 5 milligrams per liter of oxygen. So if it's ever lower than that, we can add it there before it goes out to the river. The picture on the left is just a few of our new electrical buildings. And then the picture on the right is our new generator. The generator's a huge upgrade as far as the plant goes. It allows us to run the whole plant if there is a power outage. Before, the old generator, the only way it would run is being manually transferred. So if we'd have an alarm call, we'd have to come in, manually transfer it. And we could only run about half of the plant off of that generator. So now this, if this sees a power outage or inconsistent power feed, it'll automatically transfer over to the generator. And as soon as it sees consistent feed for like 30 minutes, it'll transfer back to, to normal power. Some of the additional post-upgrade benefits, like I had mentioned, the electric bill. So before the '16 project, our electric bills averaged about 16,000 a month. And then after the '16 project, they cut down to about 10,000 a month. And then even after the 21 project with that smaller blower, we're averaging about $7,500 a month for our electric bill. So it's a savings of over $100,000 if you look back from where we were at in '16. Also, switching from chlorine to UV saves us about $20,000 annually because you eliminated the chlorine cost. And sodium thiosulfate is what we had to use to get rid of the chlorine before it was discharged into the river. And using 30% less ferris chloride, we're saving about $6,000 annually. And like I mentioned, the new SCADA system and the generator, there are a lot fewer call-ins than there were previous to the '16 upgrade. This is just a picture of the water coming in and going out. So it's cleaner than the river typically when we discharge it. This is just a page out of our MPDS permit. This is for our plant, or the effluent, where it's actually leaving the plant. These are all the different tests that we have to run on there. I know you can't really see them, but this permit spells out what we need to test for, how often we need to test for it, and where exactly we need to test for it. The landfill actually has its own permit that, that we kind of are in charge of at the wastewater plant. It's a surface water permit. But it's, it's the same, it's the same type of MPDS permit. Another part of like our normal activity out there is, so obviously you have a lot of solids coming into the plant. One thing that we do that a lot of plants don't do anymore is land application. Most people either haul it to a landfill or they try to have another plant take it, which bigger plants like us, that's really not an option. You can have other people come in and haul it off for you, but it's, you know, I've looked at that, but it's $100,000 and up per year to do that. And we already have the equipment. We just need to keep maintaining it. And we're just in the process, or at the end process of upgrading some of our semis. But for 2023, we hauled to four different farm fields in the area, a total of almost 110 acres, over, well, 1.7 million gallons of sludge or bio solids, whatever you want to call it, to the fields, which equated to 375 dry tons that we land-applied. And we have our guys in our tanker trucks that haul it out to the fields. And we have another guy in an agator that injects it into the field. Couple other projects that we did this year. We, you can see the dock on the left. The top part of that picture is just a small part of the dock that was done. And it really isn't a very good representation of what it looked like because it was in worse shape than that. But it looks really nice now. And on the right is our guys raised the edges of our sludge lagoon to give us probably another 90 to 120-day sludge capacity if we, if we would need it. I forgot to spin that picture on the left, but that was a utility trailer that we purchased at the end of '22. But in the beginning of '23, our guys retrofitted it to haul all of our hoses out to job sites where we're doing like pump-arounds. And usually, we're working with the street department when they have a dig up or something. And this has just made it a lot nicer as opposed to throwing, you know, whatever hose you need in the back of a pickup or, or on the bed of a trailer. This way, everything's always right there and all the different fittings that we would need are right there. The backhoe on the right, we purchased that from Streakers last year. It replaced our 1979 Ford backhoe that we had that was definitely, had been on its last leg for quite a few years. We also had Great Lakes Concrete Restoration at the plant for the second year in a row, doing some masonry work. You can see where they tore out a lot of bricks on the digester buildings. They did some replacement of angle irons above some of the windows that were rusted out and pushing the brick out. Also, that right bottom one, you can kind of see that, where they put that grating in to kind of let the water weep out of there. There's a lot more along the bottom of the digesters all the way around because the water was getting trapped in behind, behind the bricks and just causing a lot of deterioration in the joints and everything. We also, we have the brush and leaf composting facility at the plant. In '23, we took in over 12,500 cubic yards of brush. Tawa from Finley got the bid to grind that last year. And that's just a picture of them doing it. So we ground down, it came out to about 4,000 cubic yards. They haul out 80% of that and then we keep about 20% to give away to the residents. This is a picture of one of our guys running the leaf turner. So took in about 396 yards, cubic yards of leaves last year, which broke down to 175 cubic yards, and that's given away to the public. We give it away October 1st of every year. And if we don't limit people, it's usually gone in two or three days. This is just some data from last year as far as rainfall and then average flow through the plant. One thing I found that was interesting on here is, if you look at the rain data from this year, we had about 14 inches more in '23 than we did in '22. But then when you look at the plant flow in the second column, the average has went down, which to me indicates like the work that's being done in the sewer system is effective. You know, it's actually having an impact. We had that much more rain, but we still had less flow coming through the plant. We, and then if, at the bottom there, we treated 1,274 million gallons in '23. And one thing we're kind of proud of out there, we haven't had any EPA violations or violations of our MPDS permit. Some of the additional accomplishments in '23, I'm not gonna read through all these, but we sandblasted and repainted our fuel closets and our diesel tank. The guys took it in and did that over the winter. We purchased new entrance signs for the plant. Haven't put those up yet, but they're coming soon, hopefully. The roof on the sludge building was replaced. And we successfully completed our 23 DMRQAs, which is a testament to Chris Boar, our lab tech. He's been in the lab for probably 10 years and I don't think he's ever had any issues with. The DMRQAs are basically, the EPA sends us samples that they know the value of for everything that we run in our lab at the plant. And we just have to run them, submit our results. And then as long as we're within a certain range, then we pass. So that's something that he has to do every year. Also, at the plant, we maintain the city's 18 lift stations. Our maintenance guys check them twice a week and clean pumps or pull them and clean out the lift stations as needed. I, I think maybe we did four or five pump rebuilds last year for the lift stations. But that's just a normal part of our maintenance guys doing their work. Also, I wanted to mention the Downspout Removal Grant Program. If anyone has any questions on that, feel free to contact me. In 2023, we, the city paid out more than $3,500 in reimbursement grant money. And that's, if you have any questions on your downspouts, like if they go into the ground and you're not sure where they go from there, feel free to give me a call. We can come out and take a look at them. And they could go to the sanitary. And if they do, there's that grant fund to help you pay for removing those. And that is it. That's just a overview or an aerial pic of the plant after the last upgrade.
Anybody have any questions for Kevin? Nick?
Yes, first off, Kevin, thank you very much for that presentation. Just for council's clarification, as Kevin mentions the landfill, you may or may not be aware, the City of Tiffin operated a landfill from 1956, excuse me, to 1972, was closed in 1972. That's on County Road 90, so it's quite a bit out. It's been closed, it's been sealed. If you go out there, it's a, Kevin and I got to spend a morning out there a couple weeks ago. It's a, it's a beautiful piece of property now to look at it. But that's been closed. It's a, it's a beautiful piece of property now to look at it, but that's been closed for a number of years. We still work with the EPA to make sure there's no negative runoff or I shouldn't say negative runoff, but no pollutants going into the Sandusky River from that, from that area, which obviously the Sandusky runs into Lake Erie. So we want to keep our waterways clean as they as they go to our Great Lake.
Council member Reesner?
Just a word of things, of all the departments, yours probably gets the less of attention publicly, so we we certainly appreciate what you do. And and I know there's, sometimes there's IT's concerns from my perspective. I forward them over sometimes just to make sure that things are going well. And I always appreciate you keeping keeping it secure over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I know you guys are on the ball because when you get a notification on your phone, you're probably up at whatever time in the morning going out to check to make sure everything is running smoothly and doing that. That's just takes a lot of dedication there. Appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, I do, as we make a little transition here, just want to put a reminder out there to the public that keep your dog on a leash. You know, it's getting warmer out, so there's going to be a lot more walkers, a lot more bicycle riders. And I did witness just this past week where a dog was on a leash but not being held by the owner and went after. Luckily, it was an adult, not a child, but it could have been disastrous. You know, keep your dogs on a leash, keep a hand, keep a handhold on those. You know, let's, you know, be good community members and protect each other. Okay. And I'd like to turn over now to Chief Polly.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam President, Members of Council, I look forward to presenting the twenty twenty three year end report to highlight the police department's achievements, initiatives, milestones from the past year, from crime prevention strategies to community outreach programs. We've, we've really made some progress, got a long way to go yet, but we're making some progress in some really great areas. So let's start by looking at some key numbers from twenty three. We had eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty nine calls of services, about thirty three a day. It's about the same as twenty twenty two, just a little bit less. We had a slight decrease in part one crimes, so your major, your bigger crimes, your murder, your your theft, robbery, sexual assaults, child abuse cases, we actually had a small decrease. Typically, the larger cities are kind of our canary in the coal mine, if you will. We watch those trends and usually it's two to three years down the line, and we start seeing those same kinds of trends. Right now, in the in the larger cities, we are seeing a, an incremental increase in 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 part one crimes, so your more major crimes. So there is a potential that we may be seeing that in the years to come, just forewarning on that. We had over thirty three hundred hours of training. That's the most ever by the Tiffin Police Department. As you know, better trained officers lead to lower liability for the city. It's a, it's a necessary expense to our budget, but it, it, the return on investment is a highly trained officer dispatcher, civilian staff at the police department. We gave out more warnings than tickets in both parking violations and in traffic violations. That's by design. We do that on purpose. Education is is really the the key when it comes to traffic and in parking. And so our traffic violations are a four to one ratio of warnings to to citations, and parking is two to one. Our dispatch call for response is five point six seconds. That's hitting under our ten second goal ninety four percent of the time. As you know, the faster our dispatchers can answer the phone and get emergency services on the way, the better for everybody. And so that's about five point six seconds on average. So good, good stuff there. Viaduct was hit twelve times. It continues to be the most liked and most volume of comments on Facebook that we get on our page typically. And I have a slide completely dedicated to that to talk about. Our traffic crashes went up a little bit, but still below pre pandemic numbers. And our SWAT team, the emergency service unit, had twenty five missions total last year, but only four of those missions were the full team. So everybody, the operators, the negotiators, the drone team, the the Thames unit, all together, only four times. That is, that is awesome that it was only four times. We've already hit three times this year so far, so. And then just you can see some pics of the officers engaging with the public and kind of doing their thing out there. And that kind of leads to this, maybe. I'm not going to go through it all, but Sir Robert Peel in eighteen twenty nine developed the Metropolitan Police Force Scotland Yard. And with that, he was, he developed these Pelean principles. The design of the Pelean principles were to create a a better, more professional law enforcement agency and the law enforcement officer. And so these principles are as relevant today as they were in in eighteen twenty nine. And it's really what we should be striving for in law enforcement to meet all of these. And I highly recommend, I'm going to read them, but I highly recommend that you actually dig into some of the Pelean principles and see what they really do say. These, those are all abbreviated little definitions of each principle. But it comes down to this, honestly, all nine of them are that the public gives us our authority. We have to work with the community in order to get our authority, and we have to work together. The police of the, the police of the public, the public are the police. We have to work within the community, with the community, to solve problems and issues. And that's really at the heart of the Pelean principles. I bring that up only to say that's what I'm striving for in our vision, in our mission, in our goals every year at the police department, is to weave these Pelean principles through all of that as we go along. I'm a giant believer in whatever organization you have, big, small, private, public, that you have a mission and you have a vision for that. You need to be able to to know what, your employees need to be able to know what it is that they're trying to accomplish and where is it that they're trying to get to? And you need both of those things. I'm going to talk about goals as well, but with those three things together, having a goals, having a vision and having a mission is is how to run a department or an agency or business efficiently, and it allows your employees to see where they're supposed to be going and how they're supposed to be doing it. We had some staff changes in twenty twenty three, three dispatchers departed. We hired an officer. We hired three dispatchers. We promoted an officer to detective, a detective to task force, and we created the dispatcher supervisor position, and that was implemented in twenty twenty three. We did that for a couple of reasons, and then it's, it's just grown into something better for us. But I wanted to have the dispatch unit have a seat at the the leadership table. They they needed to have a voice on how this department gets run, and they hadn't had anything. And so we, we created this supervisory position for dispatch, and it's, it's done a bunch of things. They have, they have a voice at the leadership table. They now have a pathway to promotion if they want. We do quarterly reviews, performance reviews that had never happened before in dispatch. We have a minimum training standard now for dispatch, never had before. We've had three successful hires. They're still here. We've never done that before, and and there's more accountability. So there's been just some really good things that have happened out of, out of that little adjustment. And then some milestones. The ten year anniversary, we had one dispatcher, one officer, and a twenty five year anniversary for one dispatcher, one officer. The ten year is significant in that that's about the time first responders are done. They, they either get to that about that seven year mark, and if if they can make it to ten, they can make it. And so that that's why it's a significant one, having, having an officer and a dispatcher meet that. Goals and objectives. As I had said, you need to have goals and objectives to go along with that vision and mission. Goals are the roadmap for your team, and it it tells them, these are the things we're going to accomplish so that we can meet the mission and we can reach that vision. And so I'm pretty robust with with goals every year. Last year, we had fifty six goals, really only had seven goals, but under each of those goals, I had subcategories of goals, and it turned out to be about fifty six goals. We reached eighty six percent of those goals. The other fourteen were then reviewed, and if still viable, we included those in the twenty twenty four set of goals. The top, top goals for twenty twenty four, continue to recruit, push recruiting and retention, continue with staff wellness, and continue with the community engagement. Those were goals last year as well. But my feeling is, even though we're not actively recruiting right now, if we sit on our hands, we're just going to go backwards. We need to keep pushing all of these things, keep moving forward on the recruiting and retaining good, good people. Some highlights, non statistical highlights. We had a canine program reinstated after six years. We had a bike patrol reinstated. Our early warning system was built, we had, we had, we had slowly rolled it so that it was about putting into the early warning system, hats on the back, kudos to officers when they did good things. We wanted to be sure that we were recognizing officer for their good work. And then also for issues that we were seeing. Maybe there were some things that they could improve on along the way, or maybe we're seeing maybe an issue that we wanted to to, you know, nip the butt of it right now so that it didn't grow into something bigger later. So those two were the the big things out of the early warning system. And in twenty twenty three, we improved the wellness tracking portion of that and really, really put that into place hard so that we can tell now if officers are having some issues, if we're seeing some things on the job that we can relate to, maybe there's, there's issues at home, maybe there's issues at work, maybe there's something that we don't know about. But what it does, what the system does, it allows supervisors, command staff to have conversations with the employees and to find out what can we do better, how can we help you better along the way? So the early warning system was a, was a big deal, getting that wellness portion up and running. Created the dispatch supervisor. The lateral position was, was created as another pathway to hire last year. We've hired two out of that lateral position pathway, and they've been phenomenal officers. So that's been a really good thing for us. Added a drone pilot. We upgraded significant equipment along the way. The golf cart program was researched and debated and talked about and implemented. And at this point, I don't see that it's, it's, it's been an issue at all. I think we're doing okay with the golf cart program. And finally, I don't chase morale, but you can feel morale. And and you can go into the police department and you hear laughter and you hear people wanting to be around each other. And that's a, that's a big deal in law enforcement. That's a really big deal. So it's good to, it's good to feel that within a department. Quickly, I'll just talk about the different divisions. Patrol Division, backbone of our department, the primary responsibility is for handling emergency and non emergency calls. We have a lieutenant, six sergeants. In twenty twenty three, we had fifteen officers and one school resource officer that assisted in the summer. We now have sixteen officers because we hired one in twenty twenty four. So we, we're, we're looking good in our patrol division. All of them are player coaches. The lieutenant, the patrol lieutenant is a player coach. He is out there also doing the job as the the officers. All six sergeants are out there doing the job like all the officers do. So kind of a player coach mentality there. Criminal Division, the investigative arm of the police department, handled the more serious cases that come through. We've also continued to increase a focus on internet crimes against children, child exploitation, child exploitation, child pornography, traveler cases as a focal point as well for for that team, and they're doing just some really great work, great investigations. We have a lieutenant, two detectives, we have a task force agent, and one admin professional there. Again, lieutenant in this, in this position is a player coach, also out there investigating and and handling those things. Let me go back. Communication Division, our dispatch center is a lifeline for both Tiffin officers and EMS, fire and EMS. They answer all emergency, non emergency, informational, they handle walk in complaints. It is controlled chaos in the, in the command center there. We have a dispatch supervisor and six dispatchers there. And our dispatch supervisor is a player coach. Some stats for the patrol division, calls for service are a little lower, but but in the same kind of ballpark. Our crashes are up, but still below pre pandemic levels. Traffic stops are a four to one ratio, parking little less than in twenty twenty two, but still that two to one ratio is what we were going for. Top accident locations. Am I going too fast? I'm trying to, I know it's a long night for you all. I'm trying to get through some things. If you have questions, stop me by all means. Top accident locations, always, it seems, Walmart, Kroger, McDonald's, parking lots are amongst the top always for us, always within the top ten. The only two public streets this year were Miami and Nelson intersection was, hit a top ten location, and then the Viaduct. So yeah, that was, that's great. We've, historically going back, we have had problems with the Viaduct since like eighteen eighty two. Different kind of problem, but we still had problems. I mean, obviously a train derailment, it was then, but. So in our dispatch office, or in our mailroom, I should say, we have a sign, and on our sign are three different kind of markers. And it depends, if there's an event coming up, it might say, you know, forty six days till the eclipse. That's one marker on on that sign. The second is perfect payroll. I had told the department I will pay for pizza for everybody and every shift if you can get two perfect payrolls in a row. That means turning your time sheets in on time and and your overtime is correct and all of that. I I have not had to worry about that yet. And then the third marker on that is the last time the Viaduct was hit. And I, in March, I was walking around the department. I hit, I got into the mailroom, I saw the sign, and it said a hundred and thirteen days since it was last hit. I was like, man, that is awesome, a hundred and thirteen days. So I walk into the sergeant's office and I said, guys, can you believe it's been a hundred and thirteen days since the Viaduct got hit? And they both looked at me like I had just done the worst thing I could have ever possibly done. And I was like, what? And they're like, well, you just jinxed us. And they were serious, like I had just jinxed them. And I was like, all right, well, what, you know, cops, I know cops are suspicious. I'm suspicious too and superstitious, I should say. But yeah, come on. So we laugh a little bit, whatever, and I walk into the office. Seven minutes later, the Viaduct is hit. So I will not open my mouth. You can read below there how many times this year so far it's been hit, and I'll leave it at that. Some stats from the criminal division. We opened more cases than in previous years. We closed more cases than the previous year. We closed by arrest, went up just a little bit, and we had seventy seven total felony arrests and nineteen misdemeanor arrests out of the criminal division cases. So they're really doing some, some great work there for us. Some dispatch center stats, increased in occurrences between radio communication, between the police and dispatch, and fire and EMS and dispatch. The only reason you need to know that, and it's significant, the amount of of extra communication going on between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, because it's just more chaos for them. It's just more added noise, and they, they still, they still knock it out every day. We did, we did have an increase in walk in complaints as well. And then there were two hundred and sixty one instances where the dispatcher handled nine one one calls without any police involvement in that. So maybe it was a distressed subject that needed fire and EMS to to go there. They would handle the, that call, they would stay on the call with with that person or maybe a family member of that person, maybe providing life saving, you know, information on the phone to those people, but they did that two hundred and sixty one times last year. So again, just, just good stuff from dispatch center. The task force, there were thirty two overdose investigations last year. That's a decrease from twenty twenty two, which is a good thing. And we had four overdose fatalities in twenty twenty three, and it was six in twenty twenty two. The task force underwent some major personnel changes. changes at the, at the end of 2023. The sheriff's office, the police department, our police department, Fostoria Police Department, we changed personnel within the task force. And I can tell you, the task force right now for 2024 is, they're killing it. They're doing a fantastic job out there for, for all of us in, in our, in our areas. Emergency Service Unit, I think they're going to get rid of the Black Swamp name and just call it the Emergency Service Unit, or maybe Seneca County Emergency Service Unit. But current staffing by Tiffin, and for those that don't know, this is a collaboration between the Seneca County Sheriff's Office, Fostoria Police, Fostoria Fire, Tiffin Fire, and, and Tiffin Police. We all work together on this Emergency Service Unit. We currently staff five operators, a sniper, five negotiators, three tactical EMS personnel, and three drone pilots. And again, the drone team, or the full team was only utilized four times last year. I throw this slide in here mainly just to give kudos to Patty Hoffman. She's doing a, a two-person job as one person. She wears a lot of hats. She's a large part of our transparency within the police department. She handles all public requests for open records. And she also does some internal stuff. We have a lot of mandated reporting to the state that we have to make, and she assists us with, with all of those requirements as well. So just some kudos to her. Internal affairs. We investigate any citizen complaint that comes in. And internally, within the department, we might have a grievance, like so a policy violation, or, or we broke the contract in some way, shape, or form, and a grievance is filed. And so we do that. And then if something is very, like, wrong, and we need to look at it a little further, we'll pull open an administrative investigation and look deeper into it. Last year, we received 11 complaints, dissatisfaction with the conduct of an officer. And then out of that, we had a coaching session, which really isn't discipline, that's more of, you're, you're messing up here. And it might be out of ignorance, it might be out of, they need to read the policy a little better. We had four unfounded, four exonerating the officer, one that was not sustained, and one that was sustained and disciplined followed that. I will tell you that the body worn cameras are a, a really great service for us. It helps to exonerate the officers more times than not. And so it's been a, it's been a great tool from an administrative standpoint as well. And we had one internal grievance filed last year. It was an overtime issue. It was a mess up on our part, on the administration's part. And so we paid the, the overtime that, that that officer was due. All right. Obviously a sensitive slide, but I felt like I needed, this needs to be talked about. We need to be open and honest and transparent about everything that goes on at the police department. And so response to aggression is the amount of force or effort required by police to compel compliance by an unwilling subject. So we had 38 instances of use of force in 2023. What happens when we get some sort of use of force? The officers have to type up a report for their use of force. Use of force can be hands-on wrestling, fighting. It can be a taser. It can be pointing your, your service weapon, or unholstering your service weapon is, is actually a, a use of force. So all of those things get reviewed. They get reviewed at the first line supervision level, and then they go up through the chain of command, through the command staff, and then finally to me. And so in those 38 instances of use of force last year, they were all deemed appropriate use and within policy, and nothing was excessive. Out of the 828 arrests made, only four and a half percent of the incidents resulted in, in having to use force on, on the subject to make the arrest. That's important to know. 4.5 is much, much lower than the national average for departments our size, much lower. So context matters. And I thought it should be important that you kind of see what those 38 things were, or, or how they, they applied to us. The national average for departments from zero to 50 officers is 7% of the time they use force, and we were at 4.5. So I'm, I'm pleased to say, when our officers have the time to do so, and they can de-escalate, they de-escalate. They're trained to do it, and they do a phenomenal job of it, which is why that number is so low. 31 of the subjects, of the 38 were Caucasian, seven were African-American, two were female, 36 were male. A taser was used in two of the incidents. In 33 incidents, the subject assaulted or attempted to assault the officer. In 28 of the incidents, there was a history of violence or being armed. In 33 of the incidents, the subject was either drug or alcohol impaired, or suffering from mental health issue, or both. And I can tell you, the vast majority was both on that. Officers were injured, five of the incidents, and subjects were injured, eight of those incidents. EMS responds to all of that and, and checks everybody out. Everything were minor injuries, including for the officers as well. So that's a, that's a good thing. Oops. Training and equipment. We talked about training a little bit. 33 hours is the most our department's seen in a long, long time. We train in-state, out-of-state, online, internally. We have a lot of people with some expertise within the department that can train. We train at the state, you know, Apoda Training Center. So anywhere we can, but we get these, these, as much training, as much good professional training as we possibly can. Excuse me. All right. Some equipment purchased last year. Obviously, the K-9, the, the equipment that went along with that, the retrofitting a vehicle so that the K-9 had a place to stay. We upgraded some drone equipment. We bought some police mountain bikes. Our BAC machine was nearly 30 years old and finally just gave up on us. And we, so we had to purchase a BAC machine. We upgraded servers, computers, radios, and some other things along the way. And we purchased a transport van for the Emergency Service Unit out of ARPA funds that were there. K-9 unit was brought back after a six-year hiatus. Officer Miller went to training late fall of 2023. When she returned, K-9 Leo and she hit the streets, and in the final weeks of the year, had several significant uses, some traffic stops that resulted in some large drug seizures, and tracking of subjects located and apprehended. So looking forward to seeing what Liz and Leo can do going forward here. Community engagement, as I've said several times, and I'll say it again, it's not a slogan at the Tiffin Police Department. It should be in our DNA. It should be in the fiber of every officer. We more than doubled our community programming engagement. Our social media footprint increased, and our daily non-enforcement interactions with the community has grown as well. Those are really important instances when we're just out there talking, for no reason, for nothing, just talking with the community. Really important stuff. And so our, our folks are out there doing that as well. Something I'm very proud of, I don't know if I even listed it on here, but we created a special needs notification form as a part of all of this. And what it does is, for folks that maybe are hearing impaired, I have a son who's hearing impaired, or on the spectrum, or maybe sensitive to light, or sensitive to sound, or, or noises. What this special needs notification form does is, it's on our website, you can download it, fill it out for your son, your daughter, for you, for somebody, a loved one. And you turn that into the police department. And then we input that into our system so that if an officer is, or, or the fire and EMS are, are engaging with one of these folks, this thing pops up, this, this, this window pops up on our screen on, for the dispatchers, and the dispatchers can then notify the officer, this person has a sensitivity to whatever it might be. And so it just allows us to better serve the public and do a better job of communicating out there. So very, I'm very proud of that little, little tiny thing. Just some pictures from our community engagement across the different platforms. The Battle of the Badges, Liz gave that name to us, for the Salvation Army. It was a competition between us and the fire department, and it doesn't really matter who won, I want to make that clear. But, you know, I think the Salvation and the city, and the community won, but, but it doesn't matter who really won in the end. Safety City, trick-or-treat, reading to students, visiting classrooms. So officers, dispatchers, getting out there and, and being with the community. As tonight, just recognizing our officers for the good works that they do. They hate it. They absolutely hate it. It's, it's like pulling teeth sometimes to get them in here. But I think it's important for their families to see what they've done. It's important for all of you to see that. It's important for the community to see that and recognize them for the, the good work that they do every day. And that's our, our folks from 2023. So going forward, I, I got through this pretty quick, by the way. I'm pretty happy with how I did this. I thought it was going to be longer. I just want to say that we are going to remain a highly respected professional police department that serves as an example of the, of the area. We want to be that, that shining star that other police departments look at and say, man, we want to be more like Tiffin PD. Those, those guys are, are on it. We're going to continue with this upward trajectory on so many different levels. Some of the things I'm looking to do in 2024 and forward, we gotta, we gotta maybe do a reimbursement program for the police academy for new hires. We're looking at that and how that can work and, and what the logistics of that might be. Server room, we got to remove our server. We just got to find a better location for it. And, and so there's, there's talk and works and things that are in place that, that we're moving forward a little bit on that. And then Workplace Enhancement Project is just a fancier name to say environmental wellness. If you go to work and you feel good about where you're working, and it looks nice, and it feels nice, you want to be there. And so we have floors at the Tiffin Police Department that are 30 years old. And so it might be time at some point to, you know, upgrade a few things around the department as well. And finally, just, I want to say thank you to the mayor, city administrator, members of council, and all my fellow department heads for the support. They, they provide me on a daily basis. A big thanks to the citizens for their continued support of the police. And last but not least, I want to thank the men and women of the Tiffin Police Department for their continued 24-hour public service, three days a week, 365 days a year. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Well, I have something, it's not a question, but I want to tell you, I was at the mayor's conference last Friday, and listen, I was in a room with probably 75 or 80 different mayors from different villages and cities all over Ohio. And Tiffin is very fortunate to have the police and fire departments that we have, because a lot of the conversations that went on amongst the mayors were, like, difficulty they were having with people getting along and just cooperating. And we are so fortunate. That's Chief Pauli and Chief Chapel and everybody, like, you run an excellent department. I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. And you are correct that that is, that is something, it appears that in municipalities, there's always a competition between what the fire department gets, what the police department gets, and they, they end up looking at each other and, and fighting amongst each other. And that, that has happened at this, at this city as well. I'm fortunate to have a, a partner in fire and EMS like Chief Chapel, who is almost like a, like, I want to call him a big brother, but he's a little brother because I'm older than him. But, you know, we, we, we work well with one another. We have a lot of the same ideas and visions for our departments. And so, no, it's been, it's been great. I'm, I'm lucky to have the department heads around me that I do, for sure. So thank you.
I, I echo the mayor's comments. When you mentioned morale, a lot of that obviously has to do with your leadership. So keep up the good work. And again, thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Very good. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, Clerk of Council and Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things tonight. I wanted to call your attention to Orders 24-36. That's up for third reading tonight. And that is putting some things into the budget for the parks. There was some donations, and then there was also a police grant. Just putting those things into the budget, if anybody has any specific questions about those. And also, we were wanting to suspend Orders 2024-42, and that was requested. Another $350,000 being added to the CSO 24 and 30 project from City Engineer Watson, trying to get out in front of any future change orders that we may have, wanting to keep this project moving forward so that we can continue to pay invoices, move everything along so that there's no stagnation there. And I also have the April 2024 financial report for you this evening. Total receipts for the month for April, $6,752,271.21. Total expenses for the month were $3,922,018. General fund unencumbered balance is $5,762,411.61. Income tax receipts for April 2024 were $1,928,493. Total increase in income tax receipts in April 2024 when comparing to April 2023 was $226,988.21. That brings us to a year-to-date. The income tax receipts are currently up 7.38%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for April 2024 was $234,622.38. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $40,961,940, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Reaster.
I move to accept the Finance Director's report for month ending April 30th, 2024.
And the bank reconciliation.
Reconciliation, too.
Awesome. Thank you. So there's a motion to accept the Finance Director's reports for the month of April and the bank reconciliation. Is there a second? Councilmember Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a few items. So first, that passed out to all of you earlier was the credit card report. I should note, I didn't mention it, community of the whole, you should make a motion to receive that report tonight. But just, the basics of it is that each quarter, we just get those reports from department heads as to their credit cards. The only one that had a new one was for the mayor. No surprise there. And otherwise, we have, I guess, 15 cards. Your cap is $25,000, and that's within that limit at $25,000. Any questions on that part? Okay. Now I just have, I think I told you all yet. So we had a change in personnel in the prosecutor's office. So our full-time prosecutor, Aaron Bates, his employment was terminated, and we have replaced him. His name is Andrew Boucher, and goes by Andy. Andy comes to us from having previously worked at the city of Columbus, did two years there, has one of the assistant prosecutors. And so we're happy to have him. He's got, you know, that, that experience. He's got a couple of years within the state of a couple of the different state departments, the Supreme Court of Ohio, Public Safety, a few others. So he's got some institutional knowledge, which is kind of helpful for us. But really, it's the experience being a prosecutor, city prosecutor, used to a larger caseload for what we have. So basically, it's just, the, the problem we've had is that we have a busy caseload. We've got about 250 cases at any one time. When I came into this position, the prosecutor that we had that was coming from the county, that was coming from the county didn't stay with us. He had been with the county for a year, left because he was overworked and wanted to do something else. The prosecutor we had, Mr. Bates, was overworked and was not working out. We weren't winning trials. We were having a hard time. So we were lucky. Andy had reached out to us and was a good fit. But what we still need is a part-time person so that I don't have the same issues, that Andy doesn't burn out. That's the kind of thing we're looking to prevent. The other thing that we're doing at the office is for the prosecutors, we're putting in some case management kind of software. You know, Cheyenne works in a law firm, is used to that. John might have that as well. But this will help them be a bit more paperless and a bit more effective and efficient. So that is what I have. So I know I asked if you would consider to suspend the ordinance 2024-37. And just to kind of reiterate on that, the idea there is that we want to bring this money in. And then like I explained, we have a contract discussion with the county to bring in someone part-time come July 1. So if we can do that, if we can make that all happen by July 1, that will help us out as well as help out the county.
And by delaying this for a third reading, then that July 1 date cannot occur?
It just, it puts us up against the harder deadline because we can still pass it at the next meeting. But then I'm going to have to come and ask right away at the next meeting after that to suspend and do an emergency for the transfer to the other fund. So we still have time, but yeah, the sooner the better.
And you said you need a motion for the quarterly credit card report. Would someone like to make a motion to accept that? Councilmember Reesner.
I motion to accept the credit card statement. I'm a law director.
Thank you. There's a motion to accept the law director's quarterly credit card authorization report. Is there a second?
What second is that?
Councilmember Snae. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Nothing else from you?
That concludes.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have mayor's request for legislation number 24-21, appointment to the Civil Service Commission of Sarah Lazari.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-21 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And then in an agenda change memo tonight, we have added finance director's request for legislation, number F 24-25, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and WPCC budgets.
Thank you. Finance director's request for legislation, F number 24-25, is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-40.
Finance director's request for legislation number 24-26, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the sewer fund and early action 24 and 30 project fund budgets, and to approve a transfer from the sewer fund to the early action 34 and 30 project fund.
Thank you. Finance director's request for legislation, F number 24-26, is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-42.
And then today, we received a new permit request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Turntable LLC doing business as the Turntable, 116 South Washington Street.
Thank you. That will be assigned to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Member Thacker.
Yes, I move to amend some language in ordinance 2024-38. Right now, it reads section 1 and then section 2 twice. So instead, I would like it to read in order, section 1, section 2, section 3. I don't know if that's explicit enough.
Okay, there's a motion to amend ordinance 24-38 as Councilmember Thacker outlined. Is there a second to this motion? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
I just want to amend it so that for clarity's sake, that the section numbers go in order. I feel like that's pretty simple and straightforward.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Ordinance number 2024-34, introduced by John Hayes, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership to apply to and receive from the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Community Development, for a small cities' community development block grant for qualifying projects and allowable administrative expenses, authorizing bidding and executing of contracts as needed and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-34. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 2024-34.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-34. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Kahler. Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kahler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-34 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2024-36, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $8,648 into the police budget and $663 into the park budget.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-36. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-36.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-36. Is there a second? Councilmember Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kahler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-36 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2024-37, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $25,833 into the prosecutor's budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-37.
Ordinance number 2024-38, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance responding to petition number 2024-01, vacating the alley off of Frost Parkway, running east-west between lot numbers 517, 518, and 519 of Hemmings Re survey and lot numbers 533 and 534 of New Fort Ball Edition in the Third Ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-38.
Ordinance number 2024-39, introduced by John Kahler, an ordinance approving a contract with the Seneca Industrial and Economic Development Corporation for administrative services of a comprehensive economic development program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-39.
Ordinance number 2024-40, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the annual budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-40.
Ordinance number 2024-41, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance responding to petition number 2024-02, vacating the alley off of West Market Street, running north-south between lot number 598 of Hemmings Re survey and the alley off of St. Clair Street, running east-west between lots, lot numbers 596 and 597 and lot number 15, Olive Hemmings Re survey in the Third Ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-41.
Ordinance number 2024-42, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the sewer fund and early action 24 and 30 project fund, to approve a transfer from the sewer fund to the early action 24 and 30 project fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-42. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that city council suspend its three-reading rule and give the immediate passage to ordinance 2024-42.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-42. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
As the finance director talked about earlier, this is for $350,000. And the reason, this is a time sensitive with the invoices. A lot of them are like probably net 30 and net 60. And we don't want to stall this project for moving forward. So that's the reason for them.
Finance Director.
Yeah, I just have one more thing that I'd like to say about it, too, is just to make sure you understand exactly what's going on with this ordinance. We're asking to appropriate money in the sewer fund. The sewer fund is actually what's going to supply the money over to the project fund. So we're appropriating in the sewer fund so we can move the money over to the project fund. So we're also appropriating it into the project fund as well. But it's the same $350,000. And we're also asking you to approve the transfer between those two funds. So sewer fund is transferring that money over to the project fund. Just to make sure everybody understands that.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's mentioned before, it's for Sean Hart and Benner, those sewer interceptors.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Kahler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Kahler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kahler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-42 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. At this time, I'd like to announce a public hearing to take place at the next regular council meeting on June 3 at 7:00 PM in council chambers for consideration of ordinance 24-41 responding to petition number 2024-02. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Yes, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, I would like to first ask my fellow committee members for Ohio Division of Liquor Control, the new permit for Turntable LLC doing business as the Turntable. This is in the First Ward. It's for a new restaurant. It's going to be opening up for a new permit. Does anybody see a reason to request a hearing at this time? Or can we send that we do not request one at this point?
I don't see a need for it.
Yeah.
No issue. Okay.
Thank you.
And then I will ask Ann to sum our response.
Perfect, thank you.
And also, I have a, I want to announce a Street Sidewalk Sewers Committee meeting next Wednesday. This is the 29th at 5:15 PM on-site. This is to discuss mayor's request for legislation, one moment, 24-20, which is regarding the Sandusky and Hall streetlight. So it will be at that intersection.
And any other business?
And any other business that comes before us. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Any other business to come before council this evening? You have something else?
Well, I was going to ask, since we have, are we able to, I know we have to respond to mayor's request for legislation from Personnel and Labor Relations.
Yeah.
We don't know our chair's availability.
Yeah, I had talked to the law director prior to just confirm my, I wasn't crazy. But yeah, I think it's probably best that Councilmember Hayes then gets with the committee members and then we'll schedule it from there and announce it. So I've already sent him a message, letting him know that that was assigned to his committee and to make sure he schedules that ASAP. Thank you. Yes, law director.
And just a reminder on those. Your ordinance charter requires that you have to vote on it at next meeting. So I'll have one prepared. Even if the committee doesn't schedule a meeting in time, we'll have one ready just in case. But just so you're aware, you are required to vote on it at next council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, got it. Any other business? Law director.
Just last, did I miss, on the last piece of legislation, it was suspension and emergency?
Yes.
Those were, okay.
Yes.
Make sure I didn't miss that.
If there's no other business to come before council this evening, we can adjourn. Thank you. I had to double-check my.
Yeah, I thought I missed it.